We will go ahead and begin this city council meeting for February 23rd, 2016. If we can get roll call.
Billisic?
Present.
Cervantes Alejo?
Here.
Cavman Gomez?
Present.
Dutra?
Present.
Garcia?
Here.
Hear.
Hernandez?
Here.
If we can go ahead and please stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance to the way America and to the public.
Sorry, you have to bear with me. I got a little bit of a fever, flu, and cough and everything, so my voice is kind of going too, so I'll make sure that I'll speak up to the mic. Next item is number four, any information items, reports of dispersments, miscellaneous documents. Before I go any further, let me make sure I make this announcement. Do you mind making this announcement for me, Mayor?
Para usar los aparatos de traducir en español obtenga un aparato de la mesa junto a la caseta de traducir. Réndalo y use el canal cero, cuélgueselo en el cuello con el frente hacia afuera. Si no puede oír revise que el aparato esté encendido y sin obstrucciones. Solo funciona dentro de la cámara del concilio y regreselo antes de partir.
Thank you very much. Next, we have presentations and oral communications. Oral communications first from the public. This is a time set aside for members of the general public to address the city council on any items that is not on the council agenda. If any members of the public would like to come up, please do so now.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, staff, and members of the public. If you feel that excitement in the air, it is indeed Engineers Week. In front of you, I have dropped off a special invitation prepared by Murray Fontz, our principal engineer, inviting you to this year's annual egg drop competition. It is indeed this Thursday here at the Civic Plaza. We'll be able to showcase all the talent we have and the future engineers that come, prepare an egg drop container, and launch here from the Civic Plaza. Again, it's Thursday, 4:00, and again, happy Engineers Week to all of you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we will come back for oral communication from city council. Councilmember Billisic?
I just wanted to, well, we had a wonderful event this week with El Pajaro CDC. Congressman Sam Farr was there, and our small business administrator from Washington DC, Maria Contreras Sweet, joined us, and I think most council members were there. It was a good event and appreciated by all that were there. It was really nice to have somebody from Washington here looking at our small businesses. In addition, there was a Croatian group that met at Driscoll's on Saturday, another good event for our community. These were people coming from Croatia here, and although Monterey has been their adopted city, still a strong connection with the Watsonville community. And then we have the Zone 7 Finance Committee meeting tomorrow, our first meeting, and I think this is going to be trying to figure out funding to, we have the Army Corps of Engineers, we have different people that are going to work on the levy, but we as a community also have to come up with some money, and this will be looking at how can we do that, what's the best way. So that's the Zone 7 Finance Committee meeting tomorrow. And that concludes my remarks for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hearst?
Thank you very much, Mayor. We have good news in Watsonville. The art wall is coming to the downtown. You probably saw that in the paper today. It's going to be on the Protrusius building, excuse me, next to the Romo Park, and that's going to be sponsored and kicked off by Peter Mcaus, and there's going to be a film and some public viewing of art on March 11th, so that's good news. Also, I attended the school board meeting last night, or last week, and you know, that's always good news when I show up at the school board. The ag department was featured there that evening, and they're recruiting a new agricultural mechanics teacher to run their shops at the high school, and so that's a promising note with ag mechanics and hands-on learning through the school district. Also, the fitness revolution, the long-awaited fitness revolution at 25 Penny Lane is opening up, and that brings great joy to many of our constituents that were anxious for a fitness revolution to get going. And I saw that City Manager Montoya was a guest speaker at the Friends of the Library last Saturday, and that's also good news, so congratulations to the Friends of the Library and City Manager Montoya. I also had a chance to go to someplace that I hadn't been before, and I thought I'd been to everywhere, but I find new spots to go to. The Young Ladies Institute had a lunch last Sunday, and I didn't know anything about the Young Ladies Institute, but it is a spiritual organization devoted to charity and love, and we could use more of that, and I believe it was founded in 1887, so there's a long history of Young Ladies Institute. And lastly, I was at the original thinkers' meeting presentation at the Digital Nest last Thursday where there was a talk on warm blogs and acidification, strange ocean science. It was very informative, and we had a number of dignitaries from Santa Cruz and the university presenting, and it was very impressive to see all those great minds right there at the Digital Nest in downtown Watsonville. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dutra?
Thank you, Mayor. I first have to say, I know we have a lot of people that watch us on TV out there, so my grandma just got charter. Hi, Grandma, glad you're watching. She said she needs to watch her mijo, so here I am. Okay, so a lot of things kind of been, I had the flu for four days, so I tried to do a lot around that, I know. I hope none of you get it. It's not fun. The mayor has it right now, and I'm on the tail end, so I'm like, oh. I also went to the Digital Nest opening here not too long ago. It was great. The things that we're doing here in downtown Watsonville is super great. Jacob Martinez for working so hard to bring it down here for the kids of this community. I think it's going to be, it's going to fit in very well. I also had the opportunity to attend the CASA for the Love of Children luncheon, and I have to tell you, I know Councilmember Hearst was there as well, this was a tear-jerking moment for me, you know, listening to the real-life stories of the struggle of one of the young ladies who's actually gone through the program, and the love that the people who are in the program actually give to these kids, it's quite phenomenal. And I really, if anybody, if you have time to really be in the life of a child, CASA, it does wonders for these kids. They need someone that they can count on, and they may not get it every, they may not get it in other parts of their lives, so CASA gives them that reliability. So if you're looking for something to really get out in the community and help, CASA, please give them a call. Please be a part of a child's life and really help these kids. You will really make a difference, and I saw that firsthand through one of the speakers who's graduating high school this year. It was really, really heart-touching. I also want to say that I went to the El Pajaro Aparo Community Development Corporations, which hosted the U.S. Secretary of Small Business, Maria Contreras Sweet, for the luncheon. That was great as well, just seeing, you know, the way, seeing small businesses at work, people working really hard to just make something out of an idea that they have. You know, they brought up an example that, you know, just here in our bay, a teacher in Carmel thought of the, when you go flying and you take airborne, airborne's thought of here. I mean, this is crazy. This was a small idea. So we, you know, we have brilliant people everywhere. It was great to see the local businesses provide the lunch for us, and I want to say that the CDC, you guys are doing a great job. Keep it up. Couple things that are coming up I wanted to talk about. One is, we are having our, the garden that we all, that I talk about all the time at Davis. We're having a community mural painting day. We're going to be doing a mural on the wall right by the gardens. It's, you know, PAL is there now. We have our community garden there. The fence is about to go up soon, and we're having a community mural day on the 22nd of March. So please come on out if you'd like to help, you know, paint and get involved with doing a mural. Also, on March 5th, the Heritage Foundation is having their crab feed at the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds. If you like crab, this is a great time to get out there and get some friends together and get a table and crab together and eat a lot of it. You can get your tickets at the SCCFheritage.com. It's going to be a sellout like it is every single year, so I look forward to seeing you all there. And finally, on the same day, March 5th, it's going to be a very busy day for me, the Daisy Fashion Gala, which benefits the Santa Cruz County Family Services, asked me to be a model. So I am going to be modeling at this fashion show for the, for the family service. So if you would like, the doors open at 1:00. That is also at March 1st. Please, everything is for a good cause. All your money really does help our communities, whether it's in Watsonville or countywide. So thank you very much.
I had the opportunity as a member of the Criminal Justice Council to attend their meeting, and amongst many things, one of the new learning for me was about 21st century policing. I had an opportunity to speak with Sheriff Hart, who is enforcing or implementing this 21st century policing in Santa Cruz County, and I learned that this concept originates from President Obama, which I didn't know. The six pillars of this policing are, include trust-building, community policing, crime reduction, officer wellness and safety, and technology and social media. And I really am hoping that our new police chief, once he or she gets hired, has some ideas of how 21st century policing can be implemented in Watsonville. You may hear from some of the other council members that there is three of us, Felipe, Lowell, and I, that attended the Youth Violence Prevention Workshop Action Plan Meeting. But in addition to that, I want to share that I'm also the council representative on the Youth Violence Prevention County Steering Committee. And at our last meeting, which is actually chaired by our own Lieutenant Jorge Zamora, we agreed to remind our constituents about what we are about. So the, this council adopted the youth violence plan last summer sometime, and now we call it the Mayor's Initiative. Three of the goals of this initiative include to ensure functioning families, foster safe and vibrant neighborhoods, and promote positive youth development. And there have been three work groups working on each of these goals, and they have developed strategies for each of these goals, which were presented at the Action Plan Meeting. I just encourage all of you to in some way get involved with these work groups because we really need our community input to make sure that we're doing the best we can to address the issue of youth violence. And so you can go to their website, which is www.sccyvpt.org. I will mention again, www.sccyvpt.org for more information and to volunteer. And lastly, I want to say that I too attended the meeting with our Secretary of Business, Small Business Sweet, and what stood out for me was that they highlighted El Pajaro CDC as an example resource for the establishment of small businesses here in Watsonville. And what they do is they do the same thing that the small business, the federal Small Business Administration is doing, is they provide resources of counseling, contracts, and ability to gather capital. And that concludes my report.
Councilmember Gina Cavman Gomez?
Thank you. A few things going on in the forward aspect of things. We're going to have, there's a casino night that's going to take place, and this is for Freedom Rotary. It's an annual event. It's gone on for 32 years. It's going to be held on the 19th of March at the fairgrounds. Pajaro Valley Arts also has a few things going on on their agenda. It looks like we have the Film Festival that's scheduled March 2nd through the 6th, and I saw in the media that we're also going to have a September function that's going on. I think they're talking about the Fox Theater for that, so we'll hear a bit more about that. On top of that, I've got a Monterey Bay Area, the Silicon Valley Boy Scout Council also has an annual event, and this is a fundraiser on the 30th of March. Anybody that's interested in the scouting in terms of contribution for scouting in our community here will help benefit the scholarships for many of our youth to participate with scouting, as well as help the local camp location that's at Pico Blanco, so some of you and scouts would be familiar with what that, what that location is. And I think I have one more thing on here on my to-do list. Measure G meets tomorrow, so anyone that's interested in knowing a little bit more about the committee, what it's doing, and I do see a scout in our audience here, so there you go. Welcome. Anyway, Measure G is meeting tomorrow, and there will be some discussions about some of the budget items. If anybody has an interest, it should be up here tomorrow at 1:00, I believe. And for the time being, I think that's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I had the opportunity this past week to attend the Executive Board for the California League of Cities. I sit as a representative for the Monterey Bay Division, representing the 19 cities across the Monterey Bay area. And just to highlight some of the priorities, the California League of Cities is our sister organization working over in the Capitol to ensure that the cities have proper representation and also have a voice throughout the legislative process. And the three legislative areas that the League of California Cities is highlighting for this year includes increased funding for critical transportation and water infrastructure projects, improving housing affordability, which we know is a crisis throughout our county, but definitely throughout the state, and also looking at updating our local government tax structure to respond to the new economy. So the three various areas, I know that there's committees. I know Councilmember Garcia sits on one of the committees that has and provides input to those various strategic goals that the League of Cities has identified. There's member cities throughout the state, each sort of looking for input through city managers, city staff, but definitely through council and elected representatives providing input to those various stakeholder and strategic planning meetings. And so it's definitely work that's important and vital just to be ensure that we have proper representation up in Sacramento. One of the other things I wanted to also highlight and mention is that UCSE has been documenting the community garden over at River Park, and this weekend at one of their social justice conferences, they will be presenting some of the initial video and documentary that they've been able to put together, and they're taking up a busload of youth that participate in the community garden, and also a busload of community leaders that will have the opportunity to talk about the importance of community gardens for transforming neighborhoods, bringing neighbors together, and also the opportunity to be able to, you know, grow their own healthy food options. The last thing that I will also mention is just, that's already been mentioned, but definitely welcoming Digital Nest to the downtown. I had the opportunity to serve as the first president of the board and was invited back for one of the sneak peek events to be able to speak about its significance. I know that my own involvement on the board was really about making sure that we had it downtown, it was accessible to all of the various hubs and educational centers that serve young people in our community. And much of my talk focused on moving from digital, from the digital divide to digital inclusion. And so how is it that access to technology can strengthen and bring us together as a community? And so I'm really looking forward to what they'll be able to accomplish in our downtown.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I too attended many of the events that people spoke about from the Digital Nest grand opening. I did attend the Slavic American Cultural Organization meeting. I got to meet the mayor of Dubrovnik, make sure I get that right, city in Croatia, Dubrovnik, actually the mayor and the city manager, so. And they're going to be working on a cultural exchange of students between here and there that I'm really looking forward to. I also attended the Watsonville Mayor's Youth Violence Initiative, making sure that we have resources and funding for programs to prevent violence in our community. I attended the Pajaro CDC, you know, the kitchen incubator is a really great idea that it's a complete asset to our community, so I look forward to their work all the time and their new entrepreneurs they create out of that incubator kitchen. I attended the Sister City Kawakami Breakfast Fundraiser as well over in Applebee's this weekend, and had a great time seeing lots of teachers were there, a lot of teachers were there. I also got to attend the SIP for Second Harvest Fundraiser over in Seascape. Had a wonderful time there, met a lot of people. But that's about it for my oral communication. Next, we have on the agenda a mayor's proclamation, and if I can have Councilmember Hearst help me out with this. I hope this is working, by the way. You can have Red Cross come up.
Congratulations, Patsy. This is the American Red Cross proclamation. A Red Cross month, a special time to recognize and thank everyday heroes. Those who reach out to help people in need, and the American Red Cross heroes help disaster victims recover. They give blood to help the hospital patients. They brighten the day of injured service members. They step forward to help someone having a heart attack, and remember the heroes in Watsonville who helped people in need. They work tirelessly to assist their neighbors, and when they need help, a helping hand, Red Cross is there for them. Across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters. When an injured service member ends up in the hospital far from home, the American Red Cross offers comfort. When a hospital patient needs blood, the American Red Cross blood donors help them. And when a lifeguard jumped in to save a drowning child, or someone stepped up to help a heart-attack victim, the, the, American Red Cross was there. And the month of March is dedicated to those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, and the mission to alleviate human suffering and the, and community, and assisting community needs on American, by the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Therefore, I, Felipe Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Watsonville in the State of California, do hereby proclaim March 2016 as American Red Cross Month, and encourage all citizens to support the American Red Cross and its humanitarian mission. Congratulations.
Would you like to say a few words, Patsy?
Mayor, city council members, staff, and public, thank you very much on behalf of your American Red Cross, on behalf of our 700-plus volunteers that cover our tri-county area, Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Bernito. Most recently, we were here supporting our emergency responders from a recent fire here in Watsonville, and we're here at a moment's notice. So we're very fortunate to have the caliber of volunteers we have, everything from retired police officers to chief medical officers. So on behalf of all of us and our Board of Directors, thank you very much.
Congratulations to you, Patsy. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patsy, for all the work you do with Red Cross.
Next up on the Mayor's Proclamations is Antonio R. Rivas. Mayor Rivas is not just the mayor of, former mayor of Watsonville and a long-term city councilman, he's also, has worked hard for 45 years in public education, serving five years with the San Diego State University, eight years with the Vista Unified School District, and 10 years with the Pajaro Valley Unified District, and 22 years with the Salinas High School District. And Antonio has held various positions, including head counselor, counselor, resource teacher, migrant education, summer school principal, head teacher, Yopoyto Talent Search Summer School Coordinator, bilingual coordinator, director of College Assistance Migrant Program, and the mini-core coordinator. In Vista Unified School District, Antonio developed the first family school, La Escuela de la Familia, a community school to provide classes in basic skills, ESL, citizenship, art, ballet, folklorico, preschool education, parent involvement, and sports for the entire family. Antonio assisted and negotiated with the State Migrant Education Department in creating a region of migrant education to serve San Diego County and migrant farm workers. Antonio has assisted in having a counselor's manual for the Salinas Union High School District, and led negotiations with the AFT Union to have counselors with student ratio of 400 to 1 in the middle school and high schools. Antonio has served on various boards and held positions of regional president of the State of California Counseling Association, and the president of the Salinas League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC Council 2055, and Antonio has served on the Watsonville City Council for eight years, serving two terms as mayor and two terms as mayor pro tem. And as an elected official, Antonio has, was the regional president of the League of California Cities, state. Cities, State Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission, and Santa Cruz Metro, Library, and Criminal Justice Council. Antonio was awarded the Santa Cruz Teacher of the Year and State of California Counselor of the Year. Now, therefore, I Felipe Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Watsonville in the State of California, do hereby congratulate Antonio R. Rivas on his 45 years of service to the community and extend to him our very best sincere wishes for a long and happy retirement. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you for this recognition, and I think it's very, it's very rewarding to be working in public education for so many years in public education that it's important for me that it come to a point that it's time to leave. It's time to give the opportunity to the young generation to start educating our students. It is important for me, education has been my whole life. And as I came to the city council, that was my advocate to make sure that we have the best education here in Pajaro Valley Unified School District, and I continue to do so. And I think we have many educators here that, that doing that, and it's important that we continue. I always say that we have an educated community will have a better economic community, will have more economic development. It is important now that the new council that is here now is continuing to develop that. We have different process, but we need to create jobs for our community. It is very important, you know, educate them and make sure that we provide them with a job here in our city, even though they leave, but they can come back. And when I see some of the, you know, youngsters, I have seen some of the people have gone to Salinas, they have been educated, graduated from Watsonville High, now they're teachers over there, some are assistant principals over there in Salinas. And I say, why are you coming to Salinas? Well, there's nothing over here in Pajaro Valley, so they leave to other areas in the tri-county. So, it's important that you, as city council, continue to have that information, make sure that you have communication with the school board of Unified School District, and make sure, the most important thing is to provide good salaries to the teachers. It is important. Pajaro Valley Unified School District, you know, is, you go to Salinas, you get $5,000 more than Pajaro Unified School. It's more, sometimes $10,000 more than Pajaro Unified School District. So, that's why you, a lot of teachers leave, but it's something that we need to work more on that, on the salaries of teachers. It's important to do so we can keep them here and also to bring more teachers that, you know, there are, you know, for our students. So, I thank you for this recognition, and I continue to be around in different areas. And I thank you that you're serving the city council, and I know you're doing a great job and continue to get involved. You always, your face is all over the place in Facebook, in Twitter. Now, in my time, they wouldn't have that kind of stuff, but now you have Twitter, you know, Facebook, now it's more important that the community is doing that. So, I thank you, and we'll see you around. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your 45 years of service.
Senator O'Ning also sends his congratulations and thank you very much for your years of service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any council members on any of the proclamations?
Congratulations, Antonio.
As a fellow educator, way to go, Antonio. Appreciate it.
Next, we have item D, report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council received a report, status report during closed session, but took no final action this evening. That concludes my report.
Next, we have consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions that are considered to be routine and acted upon in one consensus motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the consensus motion. Is there any public comments on the consent agenda item? We have one.
F, the one that has to do with spending over $50,000, it looks like, on mobile radios.
F, you said? F?
Let's see, F, yeah, if you want to read the wording on the consent. And I see that this is recommended by the fire chief. I've been studying for years about wireless technology, health impacts, and just in brief, cell phones, cell towers, Wi-Fi, wireless smart meters, and wireless devices emit microwave radio frequency radiation. Independent research shows this radiation causes cellular stress and damage, DNA damage, blood-brain barrier disruption, increased cancer and tumor risk, decreased melatonin, insomnia, abnormal heart rhythms, strokes, altered brain waves, cognitive difficulties, memory, and concentration, headaches linked to Alzheimer's, and impacts to wildlife. Children are especially vulnerable. And there's a list here of sources to get the independent science, not the industry spin. Also, an article here on blind faith and wireless technology, facts everyone should know. By the way, there's a term now called digital dementia that's affecting younger and younger people. In this statement from EMR Policy Institute, they quote the International Association of Firefighters, 2004, and I'll paraphrase this, but it's referred to in here. Basically, brain scans were done on firemen comparing those sleeping in firehouses with these radiation emitting antennas on the roof and those not. And what they found were some of the symptoms I read, plus the firemen were like in a brain fog, their coordination was off, their response time was slow, many had tremors like I have, mine, I think, are both from the pesticides and the microwaves. And they wanted to have a moratorium on this because of the dangers. One person who participated in this study pointed out, the firemen are the strongest of the strong and the least likely to complain. So, we know if there are problems with the firemen, they're problems for all of us with this wireless technology. We want the firemen in good, healthy condition to be able to do the essential work they need to do. Purchasing this kind of more and more and more wireless equipment is more and more danger to the firemen and the public. It's just a fact. So, I'll leave these articles with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we can bring you back to city council for an appropriate motion?
I motioned to move the consent.
We got a motion in a second.
Vierlises?
Yes.
Gervantes Alejo?
Yes.
Carmen Gomez?
Yes, with the abstention of A and C.
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Next, we have item A, public hearings, ordinances, and appeals. Item A, comprehensive annual financial report and impact fees report for 2015, 2016 midyear.
Good evening, council members, members of the public. As indicated, we are presenting the midyear budget report for fiscal year 1516, the fiscal year that we are currently in. My name is Ezekiel Vega, I'm administrative services director, and I have with me Bill Hayes, Assistant Finance Officer. Just before we go into the actual details of the presentation, just wanted to make sure that, to recognize Mr. Hayes for all the hard work that he has done for the department. A lot of times, you see my face making the presentations, but he and all the finance staff are the ones doing all the hard work behind the scenes. So, just wanted to take this opportunity to do that at this point. So, with that, let's go ahead and move on to the presentation. The recommendation tonight, you have all these items on the agenda for review and approval. And as you can see on the slide before you, there were three items that were going to be presented to you for consideration tonight. All of those had to do with inter-fund loans. And what we're going to do is that we are asking these items to be removed at this time from the agenda, and we will bring those items for consideration to you at a later time. The reason for that is that we believe that we will be receiving feedback from the FAA pretty soon, so rather than presenting these items to you today and then get feedback from the FAA later, we would like to incorporate that feedback that we receive before we present those items to you. Do you have, okay, so good.
One more thing, Madam Protem, members of the council, I just want to mention again that these items, anything doing with the FAA and the inter-fund loan, if there's anybody here for it that we're not going to do this tonight that we're recommending pulling them, I just want to make sure that we re-announce that to make sure there's nobody waiting here. Thank you.
Okay, so, with that, the items before you are a couple of items, accept by motion, the comprehensive financial report, also the Measure G audit report by motion as well, also accept by motion, the impact fee report, and the same for the midyear financial report, and approve a resolution to add appropriations for fiscal year 1516 as appropriate. You will see an exhibit specifically on the appropriations I'm asking you to add to the budget. And I just want to make, before we move on, on the Measure G audit report, we will have a meeting, as indicated, tomorrow with the Oversight Committee. Typically, we have a meeting with them before we come to the council, but in this case, due to scheduling issues, we were not able to meet with the Oversight Committee before the council meeting, but we will be meeting with them tomorrow to review this same report that we are presenting to you tonight. So, some background on the total budget for the city, the city budget was adopted in June of 2015, as every single year we bring to you a budget in the last week of May, and then in the first meeting in June, typically, the budget is adopted. This budget, this year was adopted for a total of $130 million for the year. Of that, the majority of that comes from the general fund, about $36 million. $19 million of that also on special revenue funds, which include the Measure G fund and the library fund as well. And then, we have about $51 million in enterprise funds, which include the water fund, sewer, solid waste, and airport funds. We also have about $9.8 million in internal service funds. Those are funds that provide internal services to the city. And then, about $3.6 million in the successor agency budget. So, this item that is presented to you today for the budget for the midyear and the audit and all that is in your capacity both as the city council and also as the successor agency board. So, just a quick reference to where we have these reports, we have all these financial reports that will be presented to you on the city's website. We also have all the year-to-date information on budgets on the watsonvillecaliforniaopen.gov.com website as well. So, all the details specific to every single item on the budget and the year-to-date progress is on that website. And the same with the audits. We have, I think, approximately 10 years of audits on the website itself, and I'm just going out of memory. It could be more, it could be less, but the information is there. And the most recent audit is already posted on the website, the one that we'll be presenting to you tonight. So, just to give you some background also, I think you have seen this slide before, but in general, when you're looking at the city of Watsonville and a lot of instances, you are being asked to compare the results of the city of Watsonville with some of the neighboring cities. It is important to remember what type of revenue we're working with on a per capita basis. You look at the city of Watsonville, you see that we have approximately $700 on a per capita basis compared to all the other different cities like Monterey, almost $2,300, Santa Cruz, $1,200. And then, we're doing just a little better than Salinas on a per capita basis, but overall, anybody on this list, we are not doing as well as they are. So, the city has worked always smart with their money, has been able to provide similar type of services here within Watsonville, and in some cases, I will say better services than some of these other cities, but we're working with a limited budget. So, with that, that was just some of the background information. I just wanted to make sure that I framed this from previous discussions that we have had and to make sure that we refresh some of those basic ideas. So, what you'll be hearing about is the audit and also about the budget tonight. And we'll start with the financial audit for fiscal year 1415. That's the year that ended in June 30, 2015. So, again, the CAFER document is on this link at the website, and this is the cover page of the audit, and that is the location of the audit itself. Some of the high-level items on the audit itself, the statement of net position, a lot, some of you are business owners and you understand the balance sheet. So, this is comparable to a balance sheet that in essence shows your assets, your liabilities, and then your net equity. So, that bottom line that you see here on this document, you see $214 million is the net position or the equity that the city has at the end of fiscal year 15. That compared to the equity of the previous year, $268 million, is a decrease of approximately $57 million. And the reason for that decrease, it has to do with the implementation of GASB-68 and also depreciation of assets. I think that one of the, a couple of the council members had asked me this question early on on email, and initially, always when there's a decrease in net position, typically has to do with the depreciation of assets or when you retire some assets. But in this instance, in addition to that, we also had the implementation of GASB-68. And what that means is that for this year, we had to present the unfunded liability for pensions and the balance sheet. So, it had a significant impact on how your bottom line is showing. So, the, out of this big change, about $42 million, had to do with GASB-68 on the governmental side, and then we have a significant amount also on the enterprise funds. So, the biggest change came from that specific implementation on GASB-68. And what does that mean? In essence, we have to comply with accounting standards, and based on that accounting standard, we have to show that unfunded liability on pensions on the balance sheet. That's really what it means. And I'm sure that there'll be plenty of questions on this, on this topic, and we'll expand more if necessary. So, as you saw early on on one of the, on one of the slides, you saw that the general fund corresponds to approximately one-third of the total city's budget, probably a little less than one-third now. But that's why we focus a lot on the general fund. So, on the audit also, you have, you see this in front of you, this same chart that you have seen before, where we are tracking the fund balance for the general fund, because the fund balance, as opposed to what you saw on the previous slide, is focusing more on the short-term assets and liabilities. The other one was looking at everything that the city owns, including buildings, roads, or other type of things that the city will maintain. This one focuses more on short-term, year-to-year health of the city. So, it is very important for the general fund to track this. And as you can see over the years, the fund balance has fluctuated from a high of $10.9 million to the current year of $4.6 million in fiscal year 1415. So, you could see that we reached a low point in 2011. Last year, in 2014, it was really low at $1.9 million, but then it's going back up to $4.6 million. And that big fluctuation over the last couple of years has to do with the redevelopment loans that I have presented to you about numerous times. The initial amount that we had discussed is $4.6 million that were outstanding in loans. We entered into litigation with the state for that specific amount, and we were successful on recovering 4.4 of those $4.6 million. I think that was another question a council member had asked. Is it 4.6? I think that was another question a council member had asked, is it 4.6 or is it 4.4? Different people mentioned different numbers, but the reality is that it was 4.6. We were not successful in about $200,000, but we were able to recover $4.4 million. And those $4.4 million, I want to also make clear, is not money that we will get immediately as a check of tomorrow. We tell the state, okay, send us a check for $4.4 million. We will get that over time. I'd estimate that it could be anywhere between seven to 10 years, depending on how the formula works each year, because it has to do with how much money is available to pay obligations or the redevelopment agency, and then after that, you have to determine how much you have left, and then they take only half of whatever you have left from one year to another year. You compare a base year to the current year, and then half of that is what we could actually claim on these loans. It is a complicated formula, I showed you that actual formula before. You wish I could show you that again and send it to you by email, but in essence, it's going to take between seven and 10 years before we get that money back. Right now, we have requested $268,000, I believe, this year, as of February 1st, of that $4.4 million, but we anticipate that next year we'll be able to recover a larger amount from that loan. So that's what created, in essence, this change in fund balance from 2014 to 2015, of course, in addition to all the hard work from the city's departments on balancing their budgets and making sure that we stay within our means and the expenses are balancing the revenues for the fiscal year. So what does this leave us, overall, big picture for the city with our financial situation? As you can see, when we compare ourselves with other cities in the region, you can see the number that is highlighted in yellow, you can see that our fund balance right now as a percentage of general fund expenditures is 13.3% compared to the median of almost 24%. So we're still below the median, but we're improving from where we were last year. If you recall, last year, when we presented this audit of financial statements, we were at 5% of total annual general fund expenditures. So there is an improvement on the general fund balance, and that's the direction that we want to go in, to continue to improve in the fund balance. And thank you to, also, the adoption of a policy last year where you said, you know what, it is important to us, the council said, it is important to us to build that fund balance back up. We set a target of 20% as our target, not a hard number to say we're going to achieve that today, tomorrow, but that's our goal, and we're getting closer to that goal by being at 13% last fiscal year. And if we continue to be prudent on how we spend our money, making sure that we stay within our means, then we will be able to start growing that fund balance. In addition to that, you can see that the cash available for the city for the last fiscal year is 2.19 months. A prudent standard recommended by GFPA, Government Financial Officers Association, is two months of operating cash balance. We have 2.19 in the general fund. It is above that number that the GFPA recommends, but in an ideal world, we would like to be at a higher number. When you look at the median for the city, for other cities, we're at 2.63%, and other cities within the region are at different levels of that, with the lowest with the city of Santa Cruz, which is a little surprising, given that they have lots of revenue, but maybe they are using their cash in some ways that is beneficial for the services in their city. But what is also surprising is that we typically are better than Salinas, and we are not better than Salinas this year on that comparison. So I think that what we have to just keep in mind is that we're doing well, we have gone through a lot of hard times over the last few years, we are getting a little better, but we still have to be prudent on how we spend our funds for city services. I know it is important to provide those services, but we have to be watchful on how we spend the funds. In addition to that, you see this other item on liabilities to assets ratio, that tells you how leveraged we are. Are we borrowing a lot against the assets that we have? And in essence, we are at almost 50% compared to the median of 12%, and we're looking here at short-term debt, and also, what you have to remember is that this actually, the city made a prudent decision, I believe in 2011, to fund internally a debt that we had with CalPERS, or a side fund. We were paying approximately 8.7% on the police side fund and about 7.8% on the fire side fund. So by refinancing internally, it makes our liabilities to assets ratio to look negative, but in essence, we are saving money because we're paying a smaller percentage interest rate by investing those funds internally. So this is an internal investment that the council approved in 2011. But as that side fund is repaid, you're going to see this liabilities to assets ratio going down, and I don't recall from the top of my head right now what the ratio was last year, but I think it was well over 50%. So every year, that ratio should be diminishing, and we're not really incurring any more debt in the general fund, so you should see this going down over the next few years. So that is, in a brief summary, the presentation on the audit of financial statements. There is a lot of information that you receive on that audit, it's not too thick book, but it's a lot of pages that you have to read, almost 200 pages, I believe, but just wanted to give you the big-picture highlights on what is happening with the city, where we're going, and where we will continue to, how we will continue to improve the city's financial situation. As part of that audit, also, there was a review of the impact fees report. We are required to annually provide this report to you on how we are spending the impact fee reports. You have attachment one to the staff report that was provided to you, that in essence gives you the total revenue that was received for the year, the purpose of that revenue that was received for each of the impact fee funds that we have, how it was used, the interest that was earned, any income that was earned in addition to the fee itself, and the expenditure amounts. So of all of those fees, you can see on the next page, we have, these are all the different impact fee funds that we have. So that report has been provided to you on an annual basis, and we are providing that to you again, just for your review and consideration as well. So that's part of the audit. I will also talk, as part of the audit, about the Measure G in a later part of the presentation, but right now, I'm shifting gears and going into now, into the fiscal years 1516. I took you through where we were last year, how we ended the year on fund balance, how we are improving that, and I'm taking you into how are we doing this year. So the first thing that I have before you is one of the action items I have asked you to vote on, on a resolution to increase appropriations on the different funds. So I'm asking you to increase appropriations for the general fund, parking garage fund, general liability fund, civic center, common area fund, and the sewer fund, and the reasons for the increases in the appropriations are to the right of the amounts and how they will be funded as well. So I think that this, instead of reading everything to you here, I think this is self-explanatory, and as you have questions after the presentation, we could go over any additional questions you may have, but let's look at the general fund. In the general fund, as you will see, we have this year higher projected expenditures in certain areas that are making the fund, or projecting the fund to be over budget. And if we're going to be going over budget, we need to get those additional appropriations to be approved by the council. We cannot approve more than what the budget has initially authorized, but it is worth nothing that these additional appropriations are also funded by additional current-year revenues that will be funding that request. So that's what you see here, and the reason is that we will use new revenues to cover projected operational and capital expenses within the general fund, and I'll expand more into that in some of the following slides. And the same type of logic will be used on each of these different requests that you have in front of you. This table was part of your staff report as well, so you could refer to it if you need to. So overall, we saw some signs of recovery on the previous year, but we also see during this fiscal year that we are spending a little more than we should be spending based on our authority on the budget, although we have some also additional revenue that will cover those expenses. So the message here is, yes, we have some signs of recovery, we're taking some positive actions to make sure that we stay within our budget itself, but we have to continue to be cautious going into the future. So the next slide talks about some of those key items. There are reductions that have been made, keep in place, don't keep increasing the expenditures on the budget, that's a recommendation going forward. Also fund cost increases at the status quo levels, that means that we will have to go into the next fiscal year, when I present you the budget sometime in May, you're going to see a budget where I'm going to be requesting the departments to keep the levels of service at a status quo. That means that the furloughs are gone, we're going to fund that level of service at the level that it is being funded right now, but any type of increases will be hard to fund because we don't, we haven't identified any ongoing revenue that will be able to cover ongoing expenditures, increases. I think that we will be, we'll have enough to be able to cover some of the increases for some of our retirement costs that are increasing, pension costs, healthcare costs, some of those. So that will be part of the status quo budget. And of course, I don't want, this is not a presentation to give you all those details yet because we haven't prepared the budget, but I just want to give you a heads-up, this is something that we'll be presenting coming into the next fiscal year. Also, I'm asking overall as a message that we invest in funding the reserves. The council approved that and supported that last year, and I think that it is something that we should continue, trying to get closer to that 20% target for the fund balance for the general fund. Also, on the capital needs, we've been so many years without funding capital needs on the general fund that it is important at this point to start looking at least to funding some. We cannot continue year after year deferring, so we have to look at some of the most imminent needs and start developing a plan for that. So as we prepare the budget for next year, we'll bring you that list again of capital needs. Last year, we had a huge list of unmet capital needs on the general fund, but we couldn't fund any of them because we had the goal of ending the furloughs. So at that point, as a policy decision, we decided that it was more important for the city to deliver those services than to fund those capital needs, but I think that we have to reevaluate that as we present you the next fiscal year budget. So also part of the success of the city during the last couple of years and the current year is the furloughs, as I have mentioned a couple of times, those furloughs ended, and the value of those furloughs and other type of reductions amounted to approximately $2.9 million citywide, and for the general fund, do I have this by phone? Yes, I do, okay, about $1.6 million in the general fund. So it was a significant dollar amount that we added back to the budget this year. We were able to fund that, those furloughs, just as a reminder, because we were able to hold a few positions vacant that would generate savings. In addition to that, we had still the furloughs for half of the fiscal year, so we were able to absorb that. But as we move into fiscal year 1617, and we plan for that budget, we have to be very mindful on how we're going to be able to continue to fund these services for next fiscal year and into the future. So we will be presenting that plan to you as we come with that budget presentation. So all that work between now and May, we'll be working with departments and the city manager and all the different city staff to make sure that we bring you a sound plan on how we'll continue into that for next fiscal year. So for the current fiscal year, as we continue in the general fund, you see the different departments and their budget and the year estimate. The year is not complete, we have taken data through the month of January and look at the trends on spending with salaries and operations and any other type of expenses, and the projections show that we will be over budget on the fire department and also in the police department. The main reasons for the over-budget items on those two departments is the overage in the overtime budget. They have had, both of those departments have had challenges specific to staffing, making sure that they cover all the shifts, all the type of reasons that were explained in the staff report, and if you have more specific questions as to how we're controlling overtime and how we're going to move forward going into the next fiscal year and the current fiscal year, both of the chiefs are here present to be able to help answer those questions as well. But that is, in essence, what's creating the biggest impact. In addition to that, we have on the non-departmental department about $159,000 of that, I explained that on the staff report as well, and in essence, what then, the reason why this is going over budget is because we had the implementation of the new ERP, Electronic Resource Planning System. The council approved this a couple of years ago, I think, I'm trying to remember, a couple of things, a couple of years ago, and the way that the council approved this project was to use one-time revenues. If you recall, we had sold the Grizzly Flats timber a couple of years ago, and we anticipated that the portion of the general fund to pay for that will come from that one-time revenue since we were using, doing a one-time expense on this project. But when we were doing the carryovers of projects from last year to this year, in essence, we, the finance department, should have brought that project forward as an appropriation, but that's something that we didn't do. So now that we look at the budget this year, we're saying, you know what, we should have done this and carried that project forward with whatever wasn't spent, because you approved this project initially with approximately $600,000 in total expenditures, but we're not spending all of it in one year. This is going to take multiple years to get the project done. So what we will do to correct this is that we will add a capital project to associate it with this specific item so that, to make sure that every time when we bring the budget to you, we will carry it forward. That's the easiest way to identify it. So that's what we have on the general fund, and as you can see, even with the request for additional appropriations, you can see the total revenues are projected to be a little higher than the budgeted revenues by approximately a couple of hundred thousand. And if everything goes as projected, then we will still end the year with a positive variance of approximately $400,000 in the general fund. But that means that $400,000, when you're looking at a $36.6 million budget, is not a lot of room. So I think that we, what we have to just continue to do is continue to watch the numbers every month and the expenses, and make sure that we continue working with the departments on staying within the projected numbers so that we have a balanced budget by the end of the fiscal year. So some of the future considerations that we have to continue watching as we move along in the current fiscal year and also into the next fiscal year is the fire department overtime, also future retirement cost, and then also the capital needs for the city. As I mentioned to you earlier, the general fund has virtually no, has handled virtually no capital program over the last six, seven years. And then on the enterprise side, even though they have had a capital improvement project program, we have major capital projects that are going to be built over the next few years, and that's why the council actually approved a rate increase on the enterprise funds to be able to fund some of those, but the need on the fair maintenance there is also great, so we have to continue addressing that as we move forward. And finally, we have to continue looking at adequately funded reserves. The reserves that we mentioned earlier, not only the fund balance policy, but also the catastrophic reserves at some point, or any other type of reserves, if we could afford to start building those reserves as well. I know that every staff report I bring to you on the budget, I have some language about fund balance and also about catastrophic reserves, and typically, we never really get to talk about catastrophic reserves because we are so far below our fund balance policy that it is, it makes not a lot of sense to talk a lot about catastrophic reserves when we don't have the revenue to be able to do it. But I think it is important to mention it to you every time, to make sure that it is on the back of your head, and as we hopefully get into a better financial position, then we start also thinking about how to fund that reserve as well. So the first item that we had on the previous slide was the fire overtime budget. I'm showing you just a table that shows the trend over the last few years on how much we have spent on overtime and what the budget actually was, and the variance on the budget. And as you can see, this fiscal year, we have spent about $400,000 in overtime already. Last year, we spent about half a million, the previous year about $800,000. So you see here a trend on how much we're spending on overtime, and a lot of that has to do with challenges in staffing, a lot of that has to do with many other different absences that are unplanned in the department, but I think that it is important that at some point, we have a very solid plan to address this, and I think the fire chief could talk more about this, where he has taken some, makes some strides this year to be able to correct this problem, even though it doesn't look like when you look at the numbers, right? He has had, in addition to the strides that he has made, he has had some extraordinary challenges as well, and I'll let him speak to it when he has an opportunity as well, but it is something that is a topic, a hot topic every year, but he'll be able to actually tell you some of the steps that he has taken. But as we move forward into this next fiscal year, we have to continue watching this overtime and expense and making sure that we take, if necessary, more aggressive action next fiscal year. But I think that from what the fire chief will tell you, you'll be probably satisfied that they have taken some appropriate action. And hopefully, you'll see, you'll start seeing these numbers decreasing. So some of the fire department's efforts is they have implemented a temporary upgrade program and also they're working, hiring additional personnel. And of course, this is just simplifying what they have done. More detail will come from the fire chief as requested by, by city council. The police department overtime, we had not been too concerned with the police overtime over the last few years, but beginning in, at the end of fiscal year 2014 and 15, we saw those numbers getting close to 100,000 or so per month. So we started getting concerned at that point. And we began working with the previous police chief and saying, you know what? We need to start working on addressing these issues. But they also have some challenges in that department with staffing. And when crime spikes and they have to respond to that crime, sometimes there is no other way but to actually call people on overtime. But it is nonetheless something that we have to continue to watch. As you can see on the green lines and the triangles, you could see that the overtime trend for 2016 was following a similar pattern for 2016 in 2015. But there was a big improvement in October. And then in November, also there was some type of improvement over the previous month. And for what I have seen so far in December and January, the trend continues on improvement. So I think that's due to the good work also of the department. But it's something that we have to continue watching just as we are doing the fire overtime budget in, also we have to watch the police department budget. And overall, I think citywide, we just need to make sure that when we're looking at expenses that are exceeding the budget, we have to continue watching every single line. But I'm focusing on these lines specifically because they are a significant part of the budget and we are having to request additional appropriations to cover these averages this couple of years. In addition to the overtime lines, we also have the retirement cost that will be increasing over the next few years. As you can see on fiscal year 15, 16, the increase on retirement cost is almost 400,000 from that chart, right? And we were able to cover that during the budget that we're in right now. But for the following fiscal year, you're, we're going to see a $700,000 increase approximately based on the rates that we have received so far. So that means that it'll be about 300,000 more than this year. So as we continue to plan into the next fiscal year, we have to be very mindful of these increases and make sure that we bring you a balanced budget. And we will, we will bring you a balanced budget that tries to preserve as much of the same level of service that the city is accustomed to receive, the residents of Watsonville. But it is going to be something that is going to take some hard work, some continuous dedication by the different city departments, and also trying to look at some revenue enhancements that we could start looking at over the next few years. So one of the things that may come before you in the next couple of months is some enhancements to some of the existing tax revenues that we have. So we, without further detail, just, we're working on something also to enhance the revenue. And as soon as we have details, we'll bring that over to you as well. So we, the increases on purse on retirement continue to go over the next three, four years, but as you can see, it starts to get better in fiscal year 2021. And that is because of a lot of the losses that the market had in fiscal year 08, 09 are still being recovered by CalPERS. As you know, all the money that the city pays and employee pays into the retirement, they are invested by CalPERS. And if they have any losses in the market, then they have to make up for some of those losses. And when they have good years, at some point, they used to actually say, you know what? You need, you could pass on, on paying the rates for retirement. But those good years have long gone. And right now, we are facing increased costs over the next few years. And hopefully, those increases start to steady a little more into the out years with some of the policy changes that have been made at CalPERS. So some of the purse challenges and the reasons why these costs are increasing so much, it have, they have to do with the unfunded liability of the, of the, of the retirement, changes in the smoothing policies. That has to do with the losses in the market and also improve longevity of members. People are living longer. We are all living longer. So it is costing more also to continue to fund those pensions. The unfunded liability itself is a big topic statewide, countywide, nationwide about how governments are going to be able to afford to bring that gap between what the funded level is to the 100% funded obligations to be able to pay all the retirement benefits to retirees. And actually recently, over the last year or so, we also had a study from the grand jury that looked at this specifically in Santa Cruz County. And I, I think that you saw what the responses were there for the unfunded liability. And the biggest impact to the increased cost over the next few years is that component, unfunded liability. So for that reason, I have some additional slides in this presentation and also on the staff report that we have presented to you before. The unfunded liability, as you can see from this chart, we have three, three major groups, police, fire, and miscellaneous groups has gone over the last few years from about 68 to 79 or 80%. So the funded ratio, that means that we are, we have more money actually funded to pay those retirement benefits into the future, is improving. So the numbers are going into the right direction. And that's why we are paying more into this retirement cost because we are paying for a lot of those market losses that made the funded ratio go from over 100% instances to about 60 some percent. So now we're paying for that. And, but as we continue going along each year, that unfunded liability is getting closer and closer to being 100% funded. And what I like to use typically for this example, even though it's not the same, is like when you have your mortgage and you are paying for that mortgage and you owe, let's say, $300,000 in your mortgage, but you know that you have to pay it into the future, but you're not paying, having to pay it all now. You don't have 300,000 now, but you will have those, those monies over time as you're paying your, down your mortgage every single year. That's a similar example to what this ratio means, but it's not exactly the same. I just want to make sure that it is something very simple to, to be able to, to follow a similar type of funding scenario. So, oh, I went the wrong direction. So now, what does that mean in terms of the number of people that are being, receiving benefits for retirement? You could see that there are approximately 360,000 as of the last report that we received from CalPERS, members receiving benefits, about 267 of those in the miscellaneous group, 33 in fire and 60 in police. And that changes over time. It is just important to know what does it mean on the actual number of people receiving benefits for, for retirement? Also, what I think is important to note is that a lot of times, there's a perception that the retirement costs are significantly, they're very, very high compared to the, all the, all the different expenses to the city. And when you look at, on itself, just at the rates that you see in front of you, these percentages are percentage of salary. When you look at those numbers in that term, you see, oh my God, this X percent for this, X percent for that, different group. But when you actually look at those as a percentage of the total personnel cost, I think that these are more in line with what you are used to seeing probably in some of the other industries on 16%, 15%, if they had any type of, other type of, of retirement costs. So it is important to look at this on different light. And I think it is important to know what those rates are. So that's why I'm presenting to you all these different tables. So with the biggest challenge that we had there on, on expenses, now we need to look at the general fund revenues. I think that you have seen this turtle before maybe, I don't know. But it's, revenues have been going from being stagnant to being on turbo boost now, right? With a turtle, with a rocket attached to the back, but not really. The revenues are increasing steadily, but not this fast, as you will imagine this little turtle going. But they're increasing. So I want to present some of the trends on the, those major property, major revenues in the general fund. You could see on the property tax, you see a trend of ongoing increases with a big decrease sometime in 2010, 11. And they were lower in prior years, but now we see some stabilization in this revenue. But as you can see, there's a, a small decrease from 13, 14 to the current fiscal year estimate. And that has to do with one year, a one-time payment that we received as part of a settlement that we had with the county on, on a lawsuit that we had. That's why that property tax revenue looks a lot higher in 13, 14 than it does in the previous years. But when you remove that one-time event from the equation, the revenue has continued to be, to go up or remain about the same. And then when you look at the sales tax trend, you look at, look to a similar trend where there was a reduction and now you could see continuous increases. But of course, you cannot expect that sales, sales tax trend to continue going up. What the, any economist will tell you is that the economy goes up and down. Sometimes people buy more, sometimes people buy less. And sales tax is strictly related to anything that consumer confidence and is, is spending in the economy. And you could see that for this year, they're projected that the sales tax will go up. And we are projecting that for next fiscal year, it will be approximately 1% increase as well, but it's not going to be a significant increase. But revenues are increasing. That's the good news. For a while, they were going down, down, down. So right now, we see a, an increase in revenues. So what does this mean in simplified terms and projections over the next few years? So expenses, this is taken directly from your budget book on the different projections on expenses versus revenues. We have a, are projecting on the budget side, a balanced budget for 15, 16. And then we are projecting also a balanced budget over the next few years, but just by a little. It doesn't seem like we have a lot of room. And this is based on assumptions that certain expenses will go a certain way, that revenues will grow as projected as well. So we'll have to continue looking at those revenues carefully. And then as we present the budget for you for 16, 17, be able to give you an updated chart that tells, tells us exactly where we are. But right now, when you look on the, into the future over the next five years, it looks like we will be presenting to you a balanced budget just by looking at current trends on revenues and expenses. And also at the bottom of that, you could see how the fund balance could change as a percentage of expenses. We may be about 12.8% at the end of 15, 16. And then by the end of 19, 20, we may be about 13.9. So if everything remains as it is right now, it doesn't look like the fund balance is going to improve a lot, but also it doesn't look like it's going to be decreasing significantly as well. So that was the general fund part of it. Now we're moving on into measure G, a very important revenue for our community. As you can see from the projection for measure G, the budgeted revenues are at 2.9. We're almost a million dollars over on the projection. So that's good news for the, for police and fire services. On the other side, on the expenditure side, we have had challenges being able to hire all the staffing that we needed to hire on the fire department and I believe the police department as well. So that has created these projections where we are not spending as close to the budget as we could. Also, there are some capital purchases that we haven't been able to make so far, but we will be making in the police department. And as you can see, the fire department budget is very close under capital expenses as well. So as you can see, this fund balance or cash balance for this specific fund is projected to increase from the audit and numbers of 873,000 to about 2.6 million if we continue on this trend. So what we will be presenting tomorrow to the oversight committee will be these numbers. And I've been working with the departments on trying to make sure that if we have some major capital needs over the next couple of years, that we, we start using some of this money. Because it will be ideal, for example, in the fire department, I've been in discussion with the fire chief about buying maybe a fire truck. I think it's a truck or an engine. I don't know what the difference is, so I'll have to ask him. But it could be a fire engine potentially next year if we have some of these savings actually materialize as we are projecting. And initially, we were projecting to buy some of those capital items farther into about year five, six, or seven of the measure, but we may, we may be able to purchase some of those earlier. So we'll just have to continue to see how we are now. And as we present the budget for next year, we will probably come for your authorization to purchase some of those a little earlier. And then I'm sure that the fire and police department are going to continue to work as hard as they can to make sure that they meet their staffing levels to the right, to the right levels for this measure as well. So we also have the enterprise funds on the projections for fiscal year 15, 16. The enterprise funds consists again of sewer fund, water, airport, solid waste. So we start with the sewer fund. The sewer fund revenues are projected to be below the budgeted revenues. And the expenses are projected to be close to what the budget was. So there's some projected utilization of cash balance on this fund. And the majority of that has to do with a lot of the capital projects that have to be constructed and approved within the budget. But by doing this, we will have approximately four months of operating working capital. That is a reduction of operating working capital in the sewer fund. But as mentioned before, two months is a good standard for many funds, although enterprise ones would like to shoot at least three, three months of operating working capital. Four months is healthy. And of course, I would like it to be a lot better because this is a, an enterprise with a lot of infrastructure. If they were affected by a catastrophe or anything like that, we would like this number to be higher. So we'll continue to work with the public works department on improving this number while at the same time balancing the needs of the community to make sure that we continue replacing the sewer lines and buying the equipment that they need to the, to make sure that we treat the water within the city. So we have that on the sewer fund. On the water fund, we have a similar situation as we had on the sewer fund where the overall results come into equation. As you can see, the CIP projects, it was almost $10.9 million in the budget, but we are projected to spend only about $1.7 million. And the reason for that in the water fund, as you recall, we have the big chromium six project that we will have to be dealing with in the near future. So we had budgeted for that project initially so that you were aware of what the big problem was and the dollar amount that we will need. And also many other different capital needs within the water fund. But we do not have enough cash reserves to fund all different capital projects. So we have worked with the public works department to make sure that we only do those that are absolutely most necessary at this point, including the replacement of X number of miles. I think it's two miles or one or two for this year on the water line. But that leaves us with only 2.3 months of operating working capital in the water fund. So we'll have to continue working on improving that. And part of that is the rates that you have approved that went into effect this January will help some of that. And also just maybe getting some additional capital for some of those bigger projects in the term of bonds or all this, other type of financing to make sure that we move forward with the needs of the infrastructure in that fund. The solid waste department or solid waste fund, we have a similar situation as the other funds. And in this case, the working capital is projected at 2.7 months of, for the, for the fund. And overall, it looks like the CIP will be built at capacity and then we will be just below budget on the operating programs and the revenue as well. And again, there's a lot of unmet capital needs on this specific fund on replacement trucks on an ongoing basis. And in addition to that, I just want to mention that something that is not here is the, the closure of the landfill that we'll have to address in the next couple of years. We also have to issue some external financing to be able to fund some of that in addition to the rate increases that were approved by the council a few months ago. And what you see here is only the ongoing operations of the solid waste fund. There's a, also a specific, a separate fund where we are setting some money aside for the closure of that fund in the next couple of years. And that fund is the one that, where we will have to issue some of the financing for the closure of, of the landfill. And they, it is important to know that we have that other fund because we have also approximately $3 million in that fund in cash, but we will need more in order to be able to close the landfill when we have to close it. And the money has to be upfront, sitting in that fund when, by the time you say we're closing the, the landfill at this point. So we will come to you in the near future to authorize us to issue debt and be able to meet the cash requirements for that component. The airport. So the airport fund is moving in the right direction based on the projections. It looks like we will be exceeding, the revenues will be exceeding the expenses by approximately 144,000. 144,000 if the projections hold as we have estimated. And what that means for the cash balance for the airport, you see that they have a negative cash balance of almost four and a half million dollars there. It means that the cash balance could be improved by about 4.4 million dollars. And also, when we bring to you those items in a couple of weeks about the overall airport financing and loans between the airport and the general fund, we will expand more on the details on how this number could actually be better than the 4.4 million dollars that you see here, as they start paying some of that debt down. So it's going in the right direction, but we still have to continue watching this on an ongoing basis to make sure that we improve the current situation of cash balances. The library, a beautiful building that we have here in Watsonville with excellent services that they provide at the library. You can see that for, for a long time, the library has had significant cash reserves, but it is projected by the end of this fiscal year due to some of the capital expenses that they have had over the last few years, that the cash balance will be reduced to about 227,000. That's about three quarters of a month on operating working capital, if everything holds as it is projected. So we will be working with the library department on, the library, to make sure that we have a strategy going into next fiscal year to make sure that we improve the cash balances for this fund. We have already talked about how can we improve the cash balances this year, and also we will be improving that cash balance into the next fiscal year. And we want to get to that target of at least two months also for that library fund. And the internal service funds, those are the services that we provide internally to the city. We have the liability and workers' comp fund and the health insurance fund. Both of those funds are projected to be within the revenues that are projected and will be in balance during the fiscal year. But as you saw, we were requesting, I think, about $10,000 or so because we're projected to exceed the ongoing appropriations for the liability and workers' comp fund. So we're asking for additional $10,000 in that fund. But those $10,000 will be covered by the additional revenue that is projected in that fund. So it's not going to require additional strain in serious operations. It's just a matter of we're spending a little more than we had initially anticipated in the budget, but we're also bringing the revenue to cover that additional expense. And the health fund is projected to be within balance revenues and expenses. Now, the internal loan policy, I had this slide prepared for you for that topic. We're not going to discuss that, discuss that tonight. We also had the advanced payable that we were going to discuss tonight, but it's not going to be covered. And then also the loan amortization with the airport. So that concludes the presentation. And again, you're summarizing the actions that we're asking you to take tonight. It's a set by motion, the CAFER, the Measure G audit report, the impact fee report, the mid-year financial report, and approval resolution to other appropriations for fiscal year 2015, 2016, as shown on a previous slide. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. And we'll have city, city council questions. Councilmember Garcia.
First, I wanted to thank Mr. Vega for the quick response. I send him many, many questions. And for the public that may not know is, we received a PowerPoint right now, but in addition, we had a 38-page staff report and 142-page hard copy. So there was a lot to learn, and of course, many questions came up. But because of time, I'm only going to ask three questions right now and three questions when it comes back to us. The first question has to do is that you mentioned the 4.4 million that we will be receiving over seven to 10 years. And in your staff report, you said to us that these were one-time funds and should be used accordingly. However, you made no mention that this money is actually supposed to use to pay the water loan fund.
Correct. Correct. You are correct on that. So when that money comes back, the first obligation of that money is to repay the water fund for the loan that was made to the general fund. And I believe, yes, so that will be the first obligation. So we will be making that repayment. And then after that, any money that is left over will be going into the general fund.
And do you expect that we're going to have lots of money left over, a little bit of money left over?
Right now, we have approximately $3.3 million. That is outstanding, still of that loan, so the difference should be going into the general fund. Also, there is a caveat to that. A certain percentage of that money will also have to be going to affordable housing. That's an old, old, what would I call it? Regulation from the state, from the former redevelopment law that is still in effect, that any new money is coming in for that type of, those type of funds still have to be set aside for affordable housing.
That's wonderful. My second question is that you showed us in terms of the amount of overtime for fire and for our department, I mean, fire and police, police, and that we have to pay these additional appropriations. Do those appropriations come from our reserves? Or where do they?
They come from current year revenues. The projections that we are showing you today indicate that the current year revenues will be able, able to cover those overages. So they will not be coming from reserves, but from current year revenues. But if we continue that pattern year over year, we may not be able to stay the same. So we just have to continue being mindful of that and be as good as we can on managing that overtime.
Okay. And my last question is at one of our recent few meetings ago, it was mentioned to us in terms of that we were receiving some fees from Ethnobotonica, $8,000 a month, which is almost $100,000 a year. But I didn't see anywhere where those showed as revenues. And so I just wondered, did I miss them someplace in the list?
Those funds are going into the general fund. And I did not give you an itemized list of all the revenues or all the itemized expenses this time around, because all those revenues are in the big thick book that is, I don't know how many pages thick, but it's maybe 500 pages, the one that we presented to you in May and June. So that revenue for, for that specific settlement, I believe, are budgeted there. I don't recall of the timing. I have to look. But those, but those revenues are going into the general fund. So the revenues that you see at the $36.6 million that we projected for the general fund include, include that, those $100,000.
Okay.
Councilmembers, do you have your hand up? Councilmember Gina Kaufman-Gobert.
Thank you. I know that the discussion has about the overtime. Can we get a brief explanation of what caused it and what we're being proactive about the reduction of it? Because I know that there's a good public explanation that you can probably share with us, please.
Sure. Mayor, council members, Pablo Baroto, fire chief, staff, and members of the public. We're currently in process, we are basically down-staffed from five firefighters. We have four firefighters currently in the academy and one firefighter being rehired. Once those actually complete the process, we'll be, for the first time, fully staffed. Last year, we experienced four, two retirements, two resignations, all within a real short time period. We also hired originally six firefighters under Measure G. Now they're under the regular budget because of the promotions that caused the inability for us to do temporary upgrades, which then caused the overtime to, once again, increase.
And when do you expect your training to be finished up for everybody to be able to do the cross coverage?
So currently, in my history here, the first time in 20 years, our department with the city support is basically, we are training all personnel to be able to temporary upgrade. So basically, an engineer will be able to fill in for a fire captain, a firefighter will be able to fill in for an engineer, and then we'll have a greater ability for the next 10 or 15 years that everybody will be trained. I anticipate probably by mid-June, we'll be able to reduce that overtime significantly. We're in process, probably within the next few weeks to a month, to actually doing some of that upgrades already with the current personnel that we have that are finishing the training.
I would be interested in seeing something when that gets revisited, maybe mid-summer, on how that's working out.
Sure.
So that we can make sure budget-wise what it's looking like for us. And then perhaps police department may also respond to their overtime and their solution to that.
Good evening, council, public, and city staff. David McCartney, interim chief in the police department. And our overtime was really driven by the lack of officers. And the lack of officers, we needed to staff the streets with, with people to make sure that the public was safe and that their fellow officers were safe. During the past two years, we suffered about 10 people who had left the agency. So that left us about, about 10 people down. And we put 10 people into the police academy. It takes about, by the time somebody gets hired, goes to the police academy, goes into training, it's about a year till we have a, an officer out in the street working by himself or herself. And also during that time, we had, on average, about six people a month on workman's comp. So they were off a street, not working. And for us, that means essentially one whole shift was not able, we weren't able to deploy those folks out to the street. So with the, the people in our training program or the academy, and then people on their workman's comp injuries, we were suffering greatly for street patrol. And so most of that was driven by us having to fill overtime to make sure our shifts were staffed. And in late October, early November, we started seeing our people getting out of our training program. And we had them here at, at city council one evening and introduced them to you. So out of 10 people who started our training program, seven graduated. And by mid-November, everybody was out of the training program. And that's when we started seeing a decrease of overtime. And so we've seen a steady decrease in overtime in the month of late October, November, December, January. And that's what was indicated by Mr. Vega's PowerPoint slide.
Thank you. I have a question with regards to the CalPERS. I know that we have a $700,000 hit this next fiscal year, which is about a $300,000 increase. And I'm wondering to know if the smooth out, if there's a possibility that we can sort of spread that out over just the fiscal year to maybe into the following, because it's going to peak and then decline. Is there a possibility that we can, instead of taking a $300,000 difference for that fiscal year, that we can spread it out over two fiscal years on part of that?
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't do that because what we have to do is as we pay salaries to employees, we also have to pay a certain percentage of that to CalPERS every payroll. So as we pay employees every couple of weeks, we have to also send a check to CalPERS to pay for that. So the expense will not be all done all at once, but throughout the year, but we can only spread it into the next fiscal year. Because if we did that, we'll be in default of the amounts that we had to pay to CalPERS. And also, we will be exacerbating the problem that we have with the unfunded liability. So even though I would like to do that, I don't think that's, that's not something we could do.
Moving money around, whatever we can do on here. I do have several other questions so that the public is aware that we're thorough on this, but I know, given time, I'll just have you respond to some of those back to me afterwards.
Councilmember Billisich.
First of all, I want to thank you because I think you did a very thorough report and you put everything out there. Whether we like it or not, it's there. And I too am very concerned about the fire overtime. I know you explained, but it looks like we've gone up every month, and especially in the month of October, it's pretty, it's like three, four times more than normal. So, and it doesn't look like it's decreasing yet. So there, there are concerns with the fire department and, and I think that we, and police, I think you've, you've explained that you're on your way down, which is good. And the public looks at Measure G funds and says, okay, we've got these funds and, and, but look at all this overtime. I don't know that you need to say anything, but I'm just saying, I, you know, it's, it's kind of like where it is. And, and people can read and they look at this and say, what's going on? How come there's so many, you know, how come it's so high? And yet, you know, you said there's training and, and all of that, but for the public's viewpoint, it's like, where, this is crazy. This is too much money. Why aren't you addressing us? Not you. Why aren't we fixing this? How can we let this continue to go? So that's just a comment. The other one is that the PERS funds. You know, on the property taxes, there has been, I don't know how many years now, that the public has paid for the employee's retirement fund. And that, I mean, every year, every year, every year. And I keep hearing people say, you know, the taxes keep rising for everything. How long are we going to pay for the employees, the city employees? And it's like, well, I don't, I think that's on there. Well, isn't there an end to that? You know, like, I don't know, the school district has 30 years, Cabrillo College maybe has 20 years, or Measure G has, what, seven years? Well, what about this employee's retirement? Where is the end to that tax, so to speak? I don't know. Is there one?
The voters passed, what would I say, this tax some years ago. I don't remember the specific year. I wasn't around the city at that point, but they passed it and it's capped at a specific percentage, but it doesn't have a sunset. So the voters themselves, this was presented to them, and the voters said, yes, this is something that we're going to continue to support. And it doesn't have a sunset.
And I think that's, that's true. And I think voters still support the city. It's not that. But it's like, we, not, the taxes continue to rise, whether it's Measure G, whether it's the school district, whether it's Cabrillo, whether it's the mosquito people. I mean, everybody keeps adding a tax. And people have brought this one up, saying, is this going to end? How do we get it off our tax bills? And I, what you just said is what I thought was the case, that there isn't a sunset date. So I don't know what advice to give to the public at this point, but, but just wanted to put that out there in the open.
Yeah, I think that the, the reality of the situation, if you saw that chart, when you see all the overall revenue per capita that the city is receiving, so I'm going to go back to that, just to be able to show you that and illustrate the point. Even with all the different taxation or different type of revenues that the city is receiving, we are getting the lowest per capita compared to many cities except for the city of Salinas. And the good part about this is that actually, the public is receiving a lot of really good services within the city of Watsonville, comparable to what they probably receive in the city of Santa Cruz with a lot less. And I think that the voters at some point spoke and said, you know, we support all these different taxes. And the city, I think, is grateful for that because by doing that, they have supported the services that they're receiving in the terms of police, fire, and any other type of services they're receiving. And those are important to the community. So I think that that will be the message to them, that we appreciate the support that they have had over the many years as a city, and the city will continue providing us the quality services that, that this community deserves.
I think that the, the residents are very grateful for the services that the city provides, but I think they're tired of paying for retirement forever, you know, that there's no sunset date. But it's just something that maybe at some point, if we can, and obviously, right now, because we're not in a good fiscal place, but at some point, if there's a way to work that in there too, for future, you know, aren't you a magician?
I wish I was a magician.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Dutra.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you. That was very thorough, and you did a great job. So thanks Ezekiel for that. I have a couple of questions, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I have a question about the, the fire. And can you pull up that chart again? I saw October was 111,000. I can, it was pretty high. I'm a little, I was caught off guard with that when I saw that number. Maybe there's a good explanation for October?
Sure. Councilmember Dutra, that was the month that the fire department throughout the state of California was in that big wildland fire siege. So at that time, we sent out two strike teams for a total of about, I think it was about three weeks altogether. So that was a significant increase in overtime. Roughly, it was, our overtime cost us about $50,000 in that month. We received from the state for that response about $80,000 back to the city.
So $80,000 from that 111,000?
That's correct.
So, okay. And is that not reflected in here, or?
The revenue is reflected on the revenue side of, not on the, not as an offset to an expense, but it is kind of the 30, 36.6 million dollars of the overall revenue. an expense, but it is kind of the 30 point, 36.6 million dollars of the overall revenue. So yes, the fire department is bringing that revenue in and they're getting credit for that.
And I know we hired, I remember seeing, when I went out and I saw the new recruits the last time, and there was, there were a lot of them and I guess now they're fire, they're in the fire department. Um, but I guess there were, you said there were a couple that resigned and how are we gonna prevent that in the future? If we're gonna, we're hiring the next four, what can we do to be proactive so that we can make sure that we're always staffed at full capacity? Um, because, I mean, there seems like there's some turnover, turnover and people are injured all the time. What, what do you, do you have any suggestions?
We have a, an extreme problem, just like, um, the police department is, we're faced with high injury rates. Uh, our department is 40% right now of the department could retire within the next two to three years. So we're, we're, how do I say? We're kinda the older spectrum of the fire department, but we're currently hiring very young firefighters that'll be here for a long time. And, and the positive part is they're so eager and willing to learn and to train, they're participating in these mandatory trainings, uh, and they're very excited about the opportunities coming up. And they understand that their efforts will reduce overtime and they're participating as much as possible.
Where do you see us, um, finishing out the year and even into next year's with overtime? Do you have an idea? Could we stay within our budget, or?
I, I believe roughly we'll be on average about $30,000 a month is my personal guess.
For the rest of the year?
For the rest of the year. But once this, the upgrade program, and if I could just reiterate, be, just because everybody goes through the training, doesn't mean that I feel they're qualified to do the training as of yet. But I, I really feel with some of the expenses that we had this year with the increased training costs, the out-of-county assignments, the academy assignments, th- those are all increasing our numbers, but I, I see it as an investment in our future and it's really gonna invest in the future of the city for the next 10 or 15 years.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, in Ezekiel, in, in regard to that, if we were to say, how much do you think over budget we're gonna be from, between the two departments for the year? Do you have an idea?
Yes, I do.
Because this money comes directly from our general fund, correct?
Correct.
To make the difference. So we're, we're, it's stopping us from doing other, hiring other people because, listen, I want people hired to be cleaning, you know, to, to continue to go through, um, our slews and cleaning up places and, you know, I think we need to, we need to be hiring on different, you know, levels and I wanna make sure that we're not holding back on that because, you know, we need to start getting into the positives so we can do those things.
Correct. So when you look at these numbers, it's about 900,000, uh, over budget, uh, combined for the overtime in the two departments. Those are the 600,000 that you see there plus the 299,000, that's.
That's to date though, right?
No, that's a projection for the end of the year.
So it's about a million?
Correct.
So I mean, I really, I think that this is, like you said, we, we can maybe get through this year, but we're gonna have to have a real such, a real serious conversation with the limited budget we have in the city of Watsonville, because we have a lot of stuff we wanna do. Uh, my other co- comment is, you know, I remember last year when we looked at the capital, a lot of the capital, um, uh, things that we wanted to do were, you know, with fire and, and police, could Measure G help with those capital investments?
Measure G is helping a lot already with some of the capital investments that you saw on the Measure G slide. Let me look at the number, huh? Let me jump to that slide and I'll show you that. It's a significant amount, the Measure G is helping on the capital side. But, uh, some of the other needs that you saw when the budget was presented to you are really a general fund obligation. It'll be, it'll be difficult to.
Move those over?
Yeah, it will, it will be difficult to make that connection between the Measure G, what the voters approved, and what the needs are for those specific funds. Um, and there will not be enough funding in Measure G to be able to cover that as well. So I think that we will have to start planning to, uh.
But I remember I saw vehicles and one, and Measure G says it covers vehicles.
Correct, correct. So we're doing that, so.
Okay.
So this number that you see here, for example, in the police capital, I think that the biggest expense of that is gonna be police and detective vehicles that they're ordering. On the fire department is a lot of safety equipment for the firefighters. And then down the road is gonna be fire engines and fire trucks and things of that nature. So yes, Measure G is gonna help significantly with that. But when we presented this to the voters, we didn't have, uh, anything similar to some of those type of expenses that, or those proposed expenses that you saw in the capital improvement program for the general fund. So I think that what we have to be very careful is that while Measure G is offering us a lot of flexibility on buying certain items, we have to make sure that we follow the letter of the law to the T to make sure that we are doing exactly what the voters approved for those funds for.
I understand.
And even though the capital expenses are within that, uh, authorization, there are certain things that we may cross the line and we don't want to do that, so.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if there are things that are clearly within the Measure G, we should consider using the Measure G.
Oh, definitely, definitely, we're doing that, yes.
Uh, and then, I, a question about the, um, Parks and Community Services, I see that there's a, it's 190, almost $200,000 in the positive, right? Saving a.
Correct. The Parks Department has a history of managing their budget well and.
Why is that? I mean, maybe Anna kinda, why are you so, what's making you so great this year? That's.
I think every year they do a very good job.
But like, I'm curious, you know, because I know that we did go and readjust a lot of the pricings and is, is that affecting it? Do we see it affecting that? Or, and maybe cutting the programs, did that affect it? Just kinda curious.
Um, as mentioned early, earlier, um, historically, we have had, um, expenditure savings about 200 or 300,000 dollars in terms of, um, overall, um, budget. And that's due to, um, early years, just to being really efficient with our resources and, um, also leveraging donations when we can. And, um, just trying to utilize our resources as best we can. Um, during the economic downturn, we actually had to freeze a lot of positions. And so that produced in delays or delays in hiring, which, um, produced the amount of savings that you see. So, um, and this contribution has provided, um, a great resource to the overall city budget in terms of offsets, offsetting any other overages elsewhere. And so, um, we, um, are also been looking, um, at increasing revenues as we can. Um, we do that through our sports programs, by growing them. We do that by, um, looking at the rental facility, trying to boost that up. And, um, we also, um, will look at, uh, any new programs or activities that we might be able to implement in collaboration with other folks that might leverage revenue. But we can only accomplish, um, um, very little because of the level of staff that we have.
I see with these savings, do you ever see a possibility of, you know, maybe hiring some back, back more of the people that, you know, our maintenance guys to our, you know, parks and.
Absolutely. I think, um, it's something that we have desired as a city to do for a long time. Right now, I can tell you that we need between three to four full-time park staff.
Oh, yeah.
To maintain 26 parks, street trees, street medians, and their support too for special events.
I'm a big proponent of that. I really hope we can get it and maybe we can have a conversation with the city manager. Um, bec- you, it sounds like your guys are doing really well and maybe we can see about getting some of those funds to get some, some people rehired in those positions.
I think, um, in the future, as the economy gets better and our revenues increase, that we are allowed to fully expand what we're, you know, realizing in savings in, in, um, hiring staff because we have a, show a trend of being able to do that. Um, and equipment that we need for parks and, and other, um, of our operations.
Okay, great, thank you so much. And I just have one last question, it's in regard to the sewer. It, we, if I heard you correctly, um, you said that we're gonna, because we raised the rates and we raised the rates, we told the people, oh, we're gonna be increasing the miles of pipes that we're gonna be replacing throughout the year. But I kinda felt some hesitation today that we were only, that we were gonna stick at the one mile? And that concerns me because I sold the public on.
It could be two miles, I may have the right information, I asked Steve Palmasena to help me in that. Is it two miles, one mile? I.
We, we increased it though, correct? I mean, I just wanna make sure, because I, I think that he could answer that question better than I can. Uh, we have, I have had conversations with multiple departments about multiple things and I may have that information incorrect. Okay, when you said, I was like, oh, well. I remember telling the public, we were increasing it and last year we did a mile, so I'm hoping it's more than a mile.
Yeah, we, we have a plan and it's gonna ramp up over the years. And so, um, the beginning plan is for sewer lines about one mile per year and ramping up to two miles a year. And the water, already, we're planning for this year, probably a mile and a half. And our ultimate goal at the end of the five years is to be doing like three miles a year. So, uh, the rates actually just kicked in in January of this year, so we're just beginning to see the new revenue come in. So it's, it's gonna take some time to build up the capital to do the projects, but that is, you're correct, our goal is to get to two to three miles a year on the water side and one to two miles a year on the sewer side.
But we are moving forward though.
We are, absolutely.
Okay, I just felt for a minute, we weren't moving forward.
No, no, it's happening.
So I wanna make sure we're clear.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good, you're welcome.
I think Mayor, Council, Councilmember Dutra, I want Ezekiel to kinda mention to council that, you know, we are currently also in the process of trying to refinance some of our bonding capacity out there and trying to get some of the debt off the books so that Ezekiel and Steve can work together in the future to bring back that and use the current revenues coming to the system and go to bonding capacity for some of this.
That is correct, and we're doing some of that in the water fund right now. We have, uh, 27 million dollars, uh, in outstanding debt in the water fund that we took over for PBWMA, Pajaro Valley Waste Management Agency, I think, that's what it stands for. And, uh, we are working with them on making sure that they take on those bonds directly. So sometime in May and June, they should be able to do that. But what that will do is that it'll be a net zero effect on the overall revenue for the city, but it will increase the bonding capacity for that specific fund so that we could build a chromium six and issue our own debt for that. So that's how it will help. We're also refunding the redevelopment, uh, bonds that we have now, this, under the successor agency, so we'll be presenting that to you actually in two weeks. You will see that action item in your agenda to refund those bonds. What that will do is that it will increase, uh, a small percentage of, uh, new revenue coming into the general fund. It's not a significant amount, but it's something that helps the general fund. And then also, it will be, uh, reducing the overall payment that the successor agency will have to make, uh, on an annual basis on those bonds. So by doing that, we also will increase our, uh, dollar amount that we'll have available to for repayments of loans. So the loan that we mentioned about earlier, the 4.4 million dollars, we will be able to start getting a little more money every year for that bond because we are refunding, uh, these bonds.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Rontes Alejo?
Thank you to our Finance Director Vega. Um, I had some similar concerns that you had mentioned previously. And one is the catastrophic reserves. I do appreciate you bringing that up quite often, especially where we find ourselves in the state, um, you know, based on some potential flooding that we could face and also, um, you know, some earthquakes that we would also have to be responsive to. So could you just describe for me currently, how would, how would we be able to respond to those catastrophes and emergency situations? And I know that part of that, in order to be able to achieve some state funding to help us respond to those catastrophes would be declaring a state of emergency for the city. But prior to being able to do that, how would that impact, um, our budget and our ability to respond to those situations?
So we will have to have enough, uh, cash balances to be able to continue operating as a city, be able to continue to pay employees, and all of that will come from our, from our existing reserves. And if they were exhausted, then may, we may be in a situation where we don't have the cash to continue making, uh, those type of payments. But typically, what will happen is that, as you indicated, we will be, uh, there'll be some type of declaration of an emergency, we will be, uh, trying to keep track of the cause that we're incurring in such an emergency and then being able to, uh, request those funds from, from FEMA as a reimbursement to make sure that we get those ones rolling back into the city as soon as possible. If we had a catastrophic reserve, then that type of scenario will be less likely where we may run out of funds. Um, I think that the last emergency that the city faced was, uh, the earthquake some years ago, flooding also, uh, a few years back. And the city didn't have that type of situation because the city was a lot healthier on, on the cash reserves they had. As you saw on the trends on fund balances and cash before, the city had a lot more cash in, in the, in past years. So what I'm trying to get is a, trying to get to the city to that position again so that we do have to face similar type of catastrophes, we are able to respond to the community as they deserve without running out of cash balances. And what would the likelihood be at this point, I'm not sure, of something like that and what the dollar amounts will be, I, I'll be guessing if I was to tell you anything.
I, I also appreciate you highlighting, you know, past council and also this current council's decision, you know, in the past not to continue deficit spending and also continuing to put additional funds away in our reserves. Um, and I had questions about Measure G, that being a temporary source of funding, and should it not be extended, not brought back to the voters? Um, how are we ensuring that we're gonna be able to absorb the cost of hiring new personnel and also maintenance of the various capital facilities and equipment?
Correct. So with Measure G, if it is successful and the community sees the value of that measure, it is possible that in a few years, uh, four or five years down the road, the city can approach the voters and say, you know what, this is what Measure G is doing for the community, do you see the value in it? Do you want to extend it? That's one way to look at it. Also, if, if, if it was to go away in a few years after seven years, then the city will have to develop a plan to make sure that we have, uh, the continuous flow of resources into the funding of the capital needs of the city. Because Measure G has helped significantly with some of the vehicles and some of the other capital needs, but if it goes away, the city will be virtually having no funding capacity at this point. So that's why I think it is important as we move forward into the next few fiscal years, to start setting aside some of those funds, to start making, doing, make, investing in capital. Because at some point, if we don't fix some of the capital needs of the city on buildings or equipment, we are gonna end up in an emergency where we have to pay for them anyway. So we will have to address that on an ongoing basis and, and unfortunately, right now, we do not have the revenue stream to be able to, to do that, but I think that we see some in, small improvement in the economy and we have to start setting aside some of those, those funds every year to make sure that we address those needs.
There is a sense of urgency on many fronts in terms of different projects that we do wanna see, um, finished, you know, definitely capital improvements, definitely the need to hire more personnel throughout the various departments in the city. But I think I heard you loudly and clearly that it's about making sure we have a healthier reserve, healthier general fund, uh, to be sure to survive some of the potential impacts that a potential economic downturn, uh, might give us, but then also seeing some of this short-term funding, um, not continue potentially, there's the risk of that.
That is correct, because when the, there are some economies that are talking about the second recession now. We're just getting out in Watsonville, we're just barely catching up with the rest of the cities, but there's some economies saying that there are some downturns in the economy already. So we have to be ready for that and the best way to do that is building our reserves.
Uh, and so are those healthier reserves also, um, I, I mean, I know that there was many positions that we had frozen. Um, and so the current continuation and these projections include keeping many of those positions frozen, so we're not able to hire new personnel to fill those?
I think for the most part, yes. Um, I think that there may be discussion right now of hiring some police officers.
Um, so, Mayor, um, council member.
Pro-Ten, yeah.
So, if, if I may, um, I think what, what, first of all, let me go back to the overtime. Um, the fire chief, myself, and also Ezekiel have been meeting almost weekly, even bi-weekly, to try and figure out how to do this. In the long term, in talking to the fire chief, we may have to staff up at least maybe one additional firefighter a time because that's overall gonna be cheaper than doing with the overtime. So we gotta plan ahead and, and I know that with, with the police, uh, department, you know, for every six officers they identify to go through the academy, they maybe get two out of there after they go through the background checks and those type of things. So we're trying to find out new ways to do that rather than trying to be, find other inventive ways to affect the department because it may not be an easy way to do it. When it comes to staffing, talking to the police chief, it is a concern of mine, and I believe it is of yours too, to make sure that the officers that we have out there that have been approved by council, whether they have, are funded or unfunded, that we find a way to fund them and staff them. So we have been working on that road to make sure that happens. As far as other departments such as Parks and Recreation, we are looking at those areas to see what we can bring back because affecting the, the general public, the younger children at the younger ages in those programs is important so that we can, we don't have to deal with it as much when it comes to the police department. So we are working on those, it's just gonna take a little bit of time, so.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council before we take it out to the public? See none? Anyone in the public like to? Anyone in the public like to address on the budget items? None? See none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion or appropriate motion?
It's an exciting topic for everyone.
Councilmember Garcia?
Okay, these are my additional three questions. These questions relate specifically to the 142-page document here. So my first question has to do with what is on page 33. And on page 33, it shows that we have, we're paying 132,061 for interest on long-term debt. And my question is, and I'm not sure if I heard this earlier, it needs clarification, how much, what is the interest rate that we're paying? And did I understand that you're going to refinance that interest?
Not this debt. This debt specifically that you see here on this page 33 is for the governmental funds. And it is for various projects, including the solar projects that were installed in the city a few years back, I think two or three years ago. That's mostly that interest. I do not recall what the interest rate is right now, but I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, look it up because, you know...
I think it's three or four percent, but I'll give you a definite answer.
Oh, well, that's not bad. That's not bad, because I thought if it was higher, maybe we could consider refinancing it to get it to a lower rate.
We're paying three or four percent. I think it'll be difficult to find a lower rate than that.
No, no, that's good. That's good.
Because the reason for that is that we, when we did this, the interest rates were low and also we're getting some federal subsidies for this. So refunding it right now will be difficult.
No, 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 no. Three, four percent, that's really, really good. Okay. My next question is on page 113, and that is, can you please explain why we have a negative balance for our inclusionary housing?
Yeah, the inclusionary housing balance for the year, the revenue itself for that specific fiscal year was lower than the actual expenses.
Can you explain revenue versus expenses?
Yeah, revenue is just the income coming in, like if you were getting a paycheck, let's say for this specific fund, they're getting a paycheck of ongoing revenue of $217,000 for the year while the...
Who pays that revenue?
It comes from different sources, from licenses, permits, interest on the actual investment, loan repayments, the city issues loans to low-income families within the city, and then some of that is repaid. So that's what the income is coming from. And then the expenses is just the cost of providing housing throughout the city. But overall, this fund has an overall balance of about $1.9 million at the beginning of the year, ended with $1.9 million. The revenues for the year were $200,000, the expenses were $254,000, so we are using some of that, those reserves, to cover the overage in expenses. Overall, this fund is healthy, and typically, this is the way it works. It comes into waves. Sometimes the revenue is higher than the expenses and sometimes they're all the way around. But overall, in the long term, the revenues have exceeded the expenses over the long term, and that's the reflection of the balance of almost $1.9 million in that fund.
And my next question has nothing to do with what was presented to us in the budget, but just for the future, is, as you heard me earlier talk about, that this council adopted the mayor's initiative. And so what is it going to be, what do we have to do so that we can help fund the implementation of that mayor's initiative?
Mayor's initiative, I'm not sure.
That's the youth violence initiative that we adopted. And right now, we just had a meeting where strategies were shared by work groups, and so those strategies have to be implemented. Although many of them are low-cost, there is still some money that is needed for implementation of those strategies?
Yeah, I'll have to look at that mayor's initiative document. I don't have the details in front of me right now. I'll have to get back to you. So the answer will be, we're going to have to look at the document that was adopted by the council. We're going to have to look at the strategies, what the costs are, and then we're going to have to figure out how to incorporate those into the budget. So that's what we'll do. But I am not familiar with all the details since...
Okay, we'll just keep it on mind that that's something we want to do, or at least I want us to do. Okay?
Any other questions or discussion or appropriate motion at this time, councilmembers?
I'll make the appropriate motion to approve what's been presented to us.
I have a quick question.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it with a question.
We'll give it to councilmember Dutra, and you can speak to the motion or you have questions.
I just had a question. Or just, the, did we consider the revenues coming in from the future hotels and cannabis that could possibly? I mean, would that, so that could be extra revenue in our general fund or wherever we decide?
For future years, we cannot account for that revenue unless we know for sure that some of these projects are being built. And if they are built, maybe it'll take a couple of years before they are fully operational and bringing revenue into the city. So right now, for this year, we're not accounting for any of that revenue until they're actually implemented, or projects are built. But we will start accounting for some of that in the projections as some of those projects become closer to reality. And we could definitely say, yeah, these projects are going to be something that we will count on.
Because I know that, I mean, we're seeing a positive, it looks like it's going up and up, but it could even be better than what we see. I want people to know that we do have future projects, fingers crossed, in the works.
And I do want to comment on that. We've been talking about all the other departments, looking at getting staffed up to meet the requirements. Community development does provide opportunities to generate revenue more than many of the other departments combined. Doing the hotels, doing all of these new projects that are in the pipeline, it is important to have the staffing and the expertise in order to do that and move forward with it. So I just wanted to toot our horn a little bit because we do a lot of hard work, so.
And Mayor Council, if I may, you all will be seeing these items, these commercial projects coming to the Planning Commission and to the City Council probably within the next three to four months. These are, as Mr. Ezekiel said, these are long-term projects. They'll ramp up, the revenue hopefully will come in in the next year and a half to two years, but it will change the outlook for Watsonville as a whole as you start seeing more people staying here, visiting here, and not stopping by and moving on. So it can have potential long-term positive benefits, and you all will be seeing these very soon.
Great, thank you.
So just to clarify the motion that was made by councilmember Kaufman-Gomez, we have to accept the comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2014, 2015, accept first annual Measure G audit report, accept impact fee report, and mid-year financial report, including the enterprise fund, general fund, library fund, Measure G fund, and the successor housing agency, and also amending the budget for certain budget appropriations.
That is correct.
Great. And a second by councilmember Dutra, and I saw councilmember Hurst, you had your hand up.
Just a comment on the motion. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Hayes and Mr. Vega and really all the other employees that have helped hold the line over the years. You know, the public doesn't need to be reminded necessarily that we've come out of one of the worst economic downturns that we've had in recent history, and, but there is some things that the public can do to help us out. And first of all, you know, if they'll shop locally, that would be a great economic benefit to the city. When everybody goes to Seaside and Salinas and Santa Cruz to buy their groceries and their gas and everything else, that doesn't do us a whole lot of good. And so shopping locally is one thing. Secondly, they can improve their property, and that helps build the city up too economically. And the third thing the public can do is to support public education so that we don't have all the police and fire calls and all the emergencies that we have, that will build a better community through education. And so there is hope, but the public needs to grab a hold of some of those solutions too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Garcia?
Oh, you had your hand up.
You know, I do have to say I agree with Lowell's message about shopping local. As consumers and local residents of Watsonville, it benefits the city and city programs as well. Can we get the, Roco?
Yelisich?
Yes.
Rontes Alejo?
Yes.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dutra?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Moving on to new business, we have item nine, a request for proposal for a consultant to prepare plan to establish a revitalization investment authority. Staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and community, Keith Loyal, acting community development director, along with Kurt Overmeyer, our senior planner, who helped prepare this presentation. Tonight, we're going to talk about opportunities moving forward with a new legislation, AB2, that was recently adopted by the governor in September of 2015 and has gone into place as of January 2016. So we want to talk about how we can move forward, how we can use this as an opportunity. This provides a new agency, the Community Reinvestment Act, gives the ability to, for projects for cities to actually incorporate new opportunities that were similar to the redevelopment agency. It creates the ability to do tax increment funding, which was the way that redevelopment agencies provided a significant amount of new funding sources for economic projects in the community. It also provides opportunities to enhance infrastructure and affordable housing in the area. This is done by allowing tax increment financing. Tax increment financing is not a new tax, it's what was done with redevelopment in the past. Basically freezes the tax base at an existing level, and then when you have a new project, the additional property tax that's generated by the new project is given to the community. The, this is a way that the redevelopment agency in the past generated significant amounts of money and has invested in the infrastructure in the area. What do the cities need to do to create the new CRIA? In the past with redevelopment, it was an automatic. This is a little bit more complex in regards to the legislation. The city has to create a joint powers association with the other county entities that have taxing powers, and so that is part of a negotiated process that we would be involved in as we move forward. Also, the redevelopment agency, before we can actually create the CRIA, we have to make sure that all of the past redevelopment projects have been completed and there are no more outstanding liabilities such as a lawsuit, which we potentially have one lawsuit that we still need to solve with the state before we can actually create the CRIA authority. The governing body, as it's established by the legislation, requires five members, three of a council, and then two that work in the area, and that would be designated by resolution by the city council as we move forward if they determine that this is a project you're interested in doing. This CRIA is only established for economically disadvantaged communities. Some of the things that we have to qualify for, median households in the area can't be more than 80% of the statewide averages, we have to have unemployment that's higher than statewide averages, potentially crime rates, and identified deteriorated infrastructure. The city, as it is, meets these qualifications, and so we would be able to make the application for the AB2 CRRA districts. What can we do under the CRIA? Similar to redevelopment, we can rehab, repair, and upgrade existing buildings and infrastructure. We can provide affordable housing, we can remediate places that need environmental cleanup, we can do retrofitting, and we can acquire and transfer properties. In order to do this, it gives the ability to leverage bonding. The funds that we get through this CRIA can be done with bonds, and that will actually increase the amount of money that we can use to do the infrastructure improvements. Similar to this building, this building was done with redevelopment funds that were done with bonds. So this allows us to borrow money and enhance any of the infrastructure improvements that we can do. Helps us prepare for new developments, projects similar to the downtown plan that we were talking about, parking structures, a whole variety of things that we outline as necessary to enhance economic development opportunities the CRIA can be used for. It can't be used for staffing, but it can be used for creating infrastructure to do new projects. So what is in the plans? It establishes goals and objectives, it establishes areas that we might want to reconsider. Previously, the redevelopment agency covered almost all the commercial areas in the city of Watsonville. This will probably be more focused, areas such as Freedom Boulevard, the downtown, East Lake. We will have to have much more specifics when we create the plan, and we'll need the help of some experts in creating that. We also have to establish a housing program and how we would continue to fund and facilitate the economic revitalization. This includes a fiscal analysis, revenues, bonds, and debts and loans that could be structured for this, and also establishes time limits, which are listed here. As part of adopting a plan, once a plan is created, which we think will take approximately six months, it will take six months to actually get one adopted. So about a year from now, if we move forward with the RFP, could we actually establish a district? This lists the basic process, and the report gives it in a little bit more detail. The law has accountability built into it, as you see here. Also, there is a component for auditing, and so the transparency as part of this is built into the process in the law. The law also requires that a percentage of it be assigned for affordable housing projects, that the council has the ability to define where those would be. This is a 25% set aside. The previous redevelopment agency had a 20% set aside for the amount of money that is reserved for creating affordable housing opportunities. We can use it for infrastructure to support it, we can use it for land or unit acquisition, it can help operate the housing authority, it can help in doing relocation or replacement. So there's a wide variety of things that actually can be, the affordable housing funds can be used for, and we just need to identify it as part of the plan. And this goes over some of the other issues related to the housing. Another option is enhance finance for infrastructure finance district. This is a little bit of a different district because it only is established for infrastructure. It doesn't have a requirement for a 25% set aside. So areas that don't have existing buildings, such as the Manabiau, this type of a district would actually be more beneficial than the CRIA project. So we would have to be looking at that as we move forward, what areas make sense and what type of districts would make sense for those to be in. So in order to move forward with the CRIA, we have to do an economic study, we have to create a plan that identifies where the locations would be for this, we have to enter into negotiations with county and other taxing agencies in order to help create the JPA, Joint Powers Association, and then the council would be required to pass resolutions. We would not be doing that until we get the report that outlines all of those requirements of the law. So there's a lot of technical work that needs to be done as part of that. We need to get outside expertise that we don't have in-house, the bond council, other things that identify... things that identify all of the very technical funding issues that Ezekiel can help us with, but we don't have the actual expertise for some of these things in-house. So we're expecting that this type of a plan would probably cost an amount of about $80,000 to hire a consultant to help us prepare that. These funds would come out initially of the general fund, but once the district is created, it can pay the general fund back. So that would be, it would be an upfront cost, but you basically have to spend money to make money. The past redevelopment agency generated millions of dollars in infrastructure for the community, and we feel that this is a really good opportunity to continue that. So that, with that, we're recommending the city council authorize the city manager to prepare and distribute an RFP, to hire the consultant to prepare the plan to establish a community revitalization and investment authority. Just to, if you're more, also interested, on March 11th, there is going to be a further study presented by the state. Mr. Alejo has arranged that, at the Steinbeck Center, from 9:30 to 11:30 in the city of Salinas. So concludes my presentation.
Thank you for the staff report. Any questions from council? Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, you mentioned that in order for us to have a CRIA, that we, the city cannot have any litigations, yet your staff report says that we have outstanding litigation in regards to $2.4 million. So how are we going to resolve that, so that we can initiate a CRIA?
Our, Jan Davidson, who was our past redevelopment director, is still consulting with us, and understands that that needs to be cleared off the books. So we are in the process of making sure that we get that cleared. We can be doing the study and the research and preparing the plans. We just can't finalize the creation of the district before those are done. So during this year process it's gonna take, we believe that those outstanding debts will be completed.
And in terms of finalizing, does it have to come back to the council, so that we finalize them, or how does that happen?
Excuse me, I didn't.
Yeah, does, in terms of finalizing, does it have to come back to the council to do that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hurst?
Thank you, Mayor. When we conclude RDA, does that mean the state has to pay us back? Is that part of the process, that we can't move forward until we're fully paid off?
No, no. I mean, it basically means that the state has to no longer protest any of the outstanding debts. So that there's $2.4 million in three projects that we're still having some negotiation with the Department of Finance, that we, once those are settled, which we think we're close to, then, then we would be able to move forward with the district.
Thank you. I'm encouraged to hear that.
Councilmember Vilecic?
At this time, we're just asking to approve the RFP, but I would hope that when this CRIA is established, developed, whatever, that it encompasses the entire city.
Mayor, Council, let me, I'll ask Keith to clarify, but I believe that the previous RDA had identified the majority of the city, and I think with this new district, you cannot do that.
Yeah, I mean, the previous one covered commercial districts in the city. It didn't cover residential. This one, the way the law is written, it's much more, we have, it's gonna be smaller than the previous redevelopment agency, and we're going to have to, as part of the study, define those areas that we can get the biggest bang for the buck. So it's going to be a more limited area than the previous project.
So this is not a citywide?
It cannot, by the law, be a citywide. It only can be in areas that generate revenue, which are the commercial areas.
But it's commercial area, citywide. It's not residential, citywide, but it's not just downtown. It's commercial areas that fit the requirements, but it can, they can be on East Lake, just like they could be on Upper Main. It's.
It's commercial, but it's citywide.
Right, it's not, but it's not residential. And it has to meet certain criteria that's different than the prior redevelopment criteria, but.
Well, what about this housing component that's in here?
The housing component will be completely separate, and that will be separate, citywide. The housing has always been separate than the redevelopment. The affordable.
Is that housing then, citywide?
Yes. The affordable housing that we did under redevelopment before could be outside the redevelopment area, as long as it was in the city limits. So they're not the same thing. When you're talking about the commercial side and the housing side, they're not the same boundary.
Well, at this point, I think all we're looking for is an RFP to try and get something going.
Right.
I'm sure we'll get into more specifics at a later time.
And I just wanted to clarify, and I know Keith said it, but just to make it clear, this is not award the RFP. The RFP is coming to you for award.
Right.
So you will have another look at the scope, and what exactly they'll be doing for us.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tina Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes, so the process of the request for the RFP goes out. What kind of turn time can we expect, and then what type of timeline would we have in terms of a report back to the vendor that is selected?
I would assume we'd get an RFP out within a month, and then we would set that out probably for a 45-day review, and that would come back to council. So within probably three months, you would probably have the proposed RFP and the outline of the costs for it.
But the consultant response, once they get the bid, what would be the turn time we would anticipate hearing back from the consultant?
We'll have to ask them that in the RFP. What would be their turnaround time, once they're given the contract? So we'll make sure to ask that. We usually ask that during the interviews.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Dutra? I could tell if you have your hand up or not.
I did earlier, and I was just kind of reading this, because I wanted you to put the slide back, but then I found it on the staff report, what I was looking for. So the, we need three of the four, the four conditions that it says here, correct? So the unemployment, we meet. The crime rate, we meet barely. We don't meet, so, because we're under by a percent. Deteriorated, okay, and then how do they, so the other two are locally determined. So we basically say, we qualify? Or how is that determined? I don't understand.
That's correct. You just need to show that there are areas within, within the redevelopment, or within the community reinvestment area, that have some dilapidated buildings, and have some deteriorated or inadequate infrastructure.
What do you plan on showing? I mean, you guys have, I'm sure, have talked about it. What are your, what are your ideas of fulfilling that?
Well, in all of our commercial districts, if you define them broadly enough, there's dilapidated buildings. There's definitely inadequate infrastructure. You know, we don't have enough broadband for most of the city. We don't, you know, there's a lot of different ways that we can make that determination.
And for the structure portion, though, that's, we're gonna be using, we're gonna go down beach? Are we gonna, are we, where, do we have ideas where we're gonna? It's to be determined?
I believe that part of creating, making sure that we meet the criteria, is defining those areas that meet this. So we haven't done a full study yet, and so, but downtown clearly is gonna be one. Freedom area clearly would be able to meet the criteria. East Lake, part of Main Street, so I mean, there's a variety of areas that we can define, and then it'll be up to council to prioritize those areas that we should look at to invest in first.
Okay, and then it says that Watsonville's current median income is 71%. So I guess, you know, when, when you guys came to us a while ago for the downtown, we were compared to Livermore, so I'm curious how you get the median income for our community?
That is, what's in here is the correct. That's from the census. So we're way, way below what the standard is.
Right, so that's, our reality is below the standard.
Yes, it's below Livermore. We, you know, we, in this county, we are the lowest.
Okay, thank you.
All our affordable housing figures are, have been based on our income being 70% of the county income, median income, for the last 15 to 20 years.
Is there any other city council questions before we move on to public comment? Seeing none. Anyone in the public wishing to express interest or make comment, please come, please do so now?
My name is Robbie Olson. I live in District Two, and I'm the pastor at United Presbyterian Church, just a couple blocks from here. And first off, thank you to Keith and Kurt, for your, and the staff, for your good work on this. This is exciting. Watsonville is on the cusp of so many great things going on in this city. I have great hope for the future of this city, and for developing our, our economic base, and attracting new businesses and new revenue into our city. And what a, what a great opportunity to better our affordable housing within our city. That is a desperate need for the good people and the hard-working people of this city. And so I'm thrilled. I think this, this falls into one more hopeful and forward-thinking opportunity for Watsonville. So thank you.
Any other public input? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to city council for further discussion or a proper Councilmember Hurst?
Pastor Olson is absolutely correct. This is an important tool that was actually kind of written for disadvantaged communities like Watsonville, and so we'd be foolish not to take advantage of this. RDA was so important to us in so many different ways, in ways we don't even recognize or fully appreciate at this, at this particular moment. And so I just want to also thank Mr. Boyle, Mr. Overmeyer, for their hard work on this. And this is a new tool that we can access, an important move forward, and so let's move the resolution authorizing the preparation of the RFP.
We got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote.
Vilecic?
Yes.
Cervantes Alejo?
Yes.
Dutra?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for the presentation. Next, we have item, item 10, sorry, reports and presentations. Item A, written reports from city council members regarding conference attendance. No action required. Any comments or anything on it?
If you want, I'm saying. Last year, I attended the Victory Fund Conference, and we, it was very interesting. We talked about immigration, water issues, and LGBT issues, and it was a great experience. And I was able to share our communities, what we do here in Watsonville, and give a good, give a good example of our hometown somewhere else, so, for people across the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item we have is item 11, a request for scheduling future agenda items. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, I was wondering if it wasn't about time that we get a report back in terms of what the council passed for addressing the panhandlers?
I think that is coming up.
Yeah, Mayor Council, that is on an upcoming agenda here. Listen, yes.
Any emergency item, or is there any other further agenda items? Seeing none, any emergency items? Seeing none, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting.